We'll give everybody just a couple of moments and then we'll have a roll call. Katrina, thank you. Nice to see everybody. I told you, I ain't happy on any day that you start talking.
No, it's a good thing.
They're all like. I know. Far away.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
Let's take a roll call.
Here Anna Bartheery.
Here.
I share with you.
Here.
Erin DeHyder. Red Hales. Emily Gray here. Keith Dustin.
There.
Lori Trino.
Yeah.
Lori.
Matt Bolton.
There.
Nick Sessomary.
Here.
Patrick Shaker. Robert Daniel. Sherry Warren excuse. That's a spitzer.
Here.
Tom Desire.
All right, my friend, thank you. We'll start out this morning with the consent agenda. If anybody has any comments or I didn't need an approval.
I still proved that proved that. A minute.
Seconds. And a second from Emily. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion stands and passes. We'll open this meeting for public comments. Is there anyone online or here that would like to take three minutes and talk about what's going on in their lives? Or their world of trash? Seeing that there are none, we'll close the public meeting on that. Move on to business items. We have general managers report. Cam, you want to take that over?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. All right, good morning, everyone. Always good to be here for this month's report. For, Ray is here, pull it up real quick. But on the cover, you'll see three of our safety heroes that were awarded for their years of safety, working with our organization. And we've been doing this award for about 16 years. So we have our top runner there, Lauda Kitchen, who has hit her 16 years. And we did increase the dollar amount for those, I believe it was last, to make sure that the drivers are really getting a good reward for the safety. Because as you know, if they're accident incident and injury free, we save a lot of dollars and cents in claims and ETO and any kind of recovery that we do for property or for employees. So thankful for Lauda Kitchen. Andy Kirschman had five years and Steve Ray has five years as well. So moving on to the first big topic. Renee sent out, Renee Plant, our administrative manager, sent out an invitation for the tour. She now from recycling services. They have what we call a MRF or Materials Recovery Facility. And they opened it up for stores. Renee, do you want to just cover that briefly? Do you mind?
Sure, we have, we have a spot open that morning at 10:00 AM. For 10 positions, basically. They tried to run it, how many people were going through in the hallway? Then we're, and I got busy yet, so. So 10:00 AM, let me know. I grabbed a box from our poor folks or those that couldn't make it. But we hacked them open the box and maybe others can join. So yeah, let me know.
Thank you so much. And then moving on, we also have an invitation for our National Wakes Recycling Workers Week, or what we love when they call garbage person day. And we celebrate the breakfast on the Thursday of that week. So you know, the whole week of June 17th is National Wakes Recycling Workers Week. And then at that Thursday, June 20th, we'll have a food truck here on site. And it'll be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM. So please come and join the celebration if you can. And I believe Chaterina's got versions, versions set up.
Rudy.
Rouge. Thank you. Oh, I think we have a yes for that. Excuse me, we're going to break. Okay, so if you can just let us know, or if you just want to show your way, we'll have plenty of food for everyone. All right, this is a follow up. I was using the board to ask about the possibility of limiting repeat reservations on the scrap program. To try to expand that service for more residents. And so the initial answer is yes, we can track that information and identify repeaters. The long answer is it's going to, we're going to need more time to let you know the numbers on that. But yes, we could identify repeaters. So anybody that reserved until 24th, you may recall this conversation. You may want to set the quality that they wouldn't be eligible in '25. And then folks that would be in '25 would be the first ones on that waitlist. See if they would like to have a container for next year. So any questions on that from now, we'll have a moment to answer.
Just one comment. Did we want to make them eligible for the next year or just secondary to anybody? Just moving those to the back.
That would be totally your policy. We would rely on your policy and follow that.
Well, practically speaking, in our area, back of the line is that it's legal. I mean, if you're not on climate, well. You're not, you're not. Yes.
I don't think webinar does not like this at all. They, you know, especially when it's late getting up in, you know, in the spring or in their summer. Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're not, I have some complaints about that.
Nick, is this regarding the one issue about rotating who has been able to?
And then also about how to get online early, you know, late, early in the morning to reserve a dumpster. And they don't like it where I have to be in the driveway. Then they feel that they're responsible and they're liable.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is go ahead and, and let's, how do you feel about if we follow up with who's reserving? How often they're reserving? Track that information and see if it's even feasible to create a database and rotate that database? And then let's address some of these scrap issues after you follow, after your report.
And I don't have a problem with saying people reserve them. I mean, if they've got enough ambition to do it, pay more power to them. You know, the people that don't want to do it, you know, that's their fault.
No, no, I have a good degree. I feel like you, you get on, there's just not enough for everybody.
Yeah.
So I, I actually think it's a great, the complaint that I got this last round. And I explained that we had discussed this last board meeting. We were like, oh, okay, like they kind of calm them down significantly. And they're like, okay, that makes sense. That's fair.
Exactly, I think fair is a great word. If you're looking for something fair.
True too.
Yeah.
Renee?
Well, it's just something that we've been trying to reiterate to our customers on the phone this year. It was reminding that they have their landfill later voucher that they can use, they can do stuff out there. And then they also got a trailer event program that's seven for three things. Really, ten things, you know. So to the alternative, you know, they're the only, you know, clean up. I think we're both reiterating that.
Renee, thank you. I should know this, but I have not looked at the reservation page. Is, are there links there? If you were unable to reserve, here are your options. So that might be something to look at as well. It calms their nerves. It calms their.
How many, how many dumpsters do we put out? Like, I mean, do you put outlets, you know, people reserve? How many, like for magnet example, how many dumpsters can be reserved throughout there?
We have 60 a day. Depending on how close we are to a tipping facility, we may be able to do it for a day. And that's based on staffing levels. That's the only reason we made the change from when it was out in the street. And the board did have at least three months worth of discussion last year. Looked at the different scenarios. But I think initially we started with eight scenarios and narrowed it six. And then narrowed it down to, we don't really think we can change anything right now because of the staffing level. But this would be a way to expand it to more numbers of people, if I can, and more residents. Give them a little more opportunity.
Because that would just happen if like people were getting the same dumpster that you're?
Same people get.
Same people get the dumpster. And yeah, it's hard.
All right, Cam?
Okay, there's nothing else on that. We'll be following with you again in June with the data and that report. And so moving on to the financial stewardship and employee satisfaction. Matt Turkis, then our controller, dived into the fee that we receive as an employer. And then our employee agency from Mission Square Retirement System. And this is the alternative social security program for retirement accounts that the board established back in 2013 when we launched. We did not have to go into social security. So this is an alternative for that. And then finding out that URF has the same opportunities. And the only reason the board did not go with Mission, URF and affiliate were separated was the board was concerned at that time about employees taking loans out. And then over time, I think, and we had this discussion that you would feel like it's their money. If they want to take a loan and pay themselves back, why not? So with the lower fee that you probably carbon system does offer us as an employer and the employee. We made this change and it sounds so simple, but it's a little behind the scenes. And I was hoping that we could delegate some of this out with Mission Square. We're only doing me as a signer and the head of the organization. I was thankful that, you know, we were able to jump through some hoops and finally get it to an easy process for the 457. The 401A was an easy process. It was an automatic deconversion, liquidated accounts, transfer those over to URF via wire. 457, it was a little trickier, but I know that I got a notice from Mission Square that all of my money has transferred over. I think most of our employees about that notification as well. Yeah. We're, we're just going to shore up any former employees that maybe we haven't heard of. And Hazel was a big part and Lisa Kelly as well, authority in those 457 rollout forms of Mission Square. And I don't know if you have anything to add, Hazel, or Paul, but it's, I'm thankful that we've gotten this far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will.
That's a lot of work.
Thank you for this in the middle of a time customer coming in and helping to get creative, logging to URF. Be a little more proactive. You know, educating them about their time of safety. But some people are all pretty good.
That's awesome. Terrific. Okay.
Thank you. Next subject is sustaining this organization for the law. So one of the leadership philosophies I've had over the years is to work on leadership development and team building. And it's time to regroup. And the leadership consultant that I've worked with in the past and the team has worked with is Pam Guardia. We've been working with her since 2017. She wanted to do retirement for a little while with kind of why we kind of lack. And then as well, you know, it's just good timing. We have new people in leadership role that have not gone through this strategic planning and what's working, what's not, and develop their leadership plan. And so that's what we're going to work on. And there are, those people are, Hazel Duffmore, HR manager. Justin Tough is our collection manager. Catarina Garcia, a wonderful executive assistant, who's always at the head of the table there. And Shane Norris, First A.D. and Urgency Competence. These are folks that have come in and I really want them to be part of this development. And I also think it gives us an opportunity as a management team to regroup and get with Pam and talk about what's working and pull out our own leadership plans and focus on the future. The next step is also to work with Dr. Derek Tolson at Utah State University. He runs the IC. And just so you know, Pam Guardia was with the university because she's on her own now. And it's very low cost for I think what we're going to get out of the new leadership development. Now with Dr. Tolson, I really want our core team, our executive team, to work with Dr. Tolson and become more cohesive, think strategically about the future. Where, where are we going to do to sustain your work for the long haul? We have some challenges that have been with us with finances. And just want to make sure we're grouped and are strong and core. And then expand that to our management team as well. So the nice thing is that the work with Dr. Tolson will start with a three hour workshop with he and a gentleman named John Trail, both are very skilled people to work with us on this strength, strengthening our core team and then also resilient in line that. I love that. So the truck, the Utah Local Government's truck has offered to sponsor this for us. Yeah, yeah, very nice. Steve Hansen, I told him we were going to, he worked with Dr. Tolson and he, in fact, that's how I learned about this program and this, this workshop is I attended one through the truck. And when he learned about this, Steve Hansen, I mean, he said he wanted to sponsor and see how it goes for us. He may expand this to all truckers. I think it's really cool. That's a technical term, very cool. All right. So this is, this is a employee highlight. So I want to start doing this on a monthly basis and highlight our employees because these are the folks that help get stuff done. And this month, we have, I wanted to highlight Pam Savage, our payroll technician. And Pam is right back here because pretty quickly, we're going to have you adopt a resolutions recognizer for 19 years of public service, 17 of which she's been with the Whupford organization previously sanitation. And anyway, we'll, we'll talk about Pam a lot more here in a little bit. And then I wanted to give a big shout out to James Kelsey, he's in the back corner over here. And he is our new sustainability coordinator. James, what if you would like to stand up? Get you back in the corner, there we go. Thank you. He was promoted from the quality insurance inspector position. And that being promoted within allows another opportunity for promotion. So I really want to thank him for that. And he also is working on his, is it a degree? Yeah, yeah. So I'm thankful that he's here with us. And he was also at cleanup on Saturday.
And you'll see more of there.
We'll see more of James. And then Renee Plant, our administrative manager, right up there in front of the room, earned her master's in public administration degree on Friday, April 26th, since last month. So yeah, I think we've. That's a big endeavor.
Huge endeavor.
So congratulations. And then Jorge Benitez is right behind me. And he wants to stand up for me. So he might say, he's our data and program specialist. His division was created, gosh, almost a year and a half ago, I believe. And works underneath per day and tracking all of the data that we have available to us, like the scrap program booking, the program talk, cunages, et cetera. So that we have one source of information push out so that we know the four, but one representation. And thank you very much. So congratulations to all of these. And he's also halfway done with his master's degree. We'll finish next June. So yeah, Jorge, but that's all.
There's no question. Any question?
I might add too that a special congratulations needs to go out to Mayor Smolka on his wedding.
Yes.
Lori, I didn't hear that.
Oh, I was just going to say, a special graduation goes out to Immigration Canyon and their mayor, who was just married this last weekend, so.
Yeah, a very nice reception that's how, which is dropped down right to the tree.
Ah, that was beautiful.
It was incredible.
Neat.
Really cool.
All right.
Thanks Lori.
We have a resolution, Pam. Would you like me to read this resolution?
That'd be great.
All right. We'll go ahead and Pam. I just want to read this resolution and give you more insight about Pam. Be it known and remembered that whereas the Wasatch Frontway to Recycling District, formerly known as Salt Lake County Special District Number One, was established in January 97, or excuse me, 77 by the Salt Lake County Commissioner, and remain Wasatch Frontway to Recycling District effective January 1st, 2013 by District Board. And then whereas on November, yes, 2009, Salt Lake County Council created the Even Trade of Control Board to govern the district since January 1st, 2014. And on March 16th, 2022, the county council recognized the district as a local district and the Board of Trustees' resident full governing authority is allowed under this statute. Pam Savage was hired as a public employee in 2005. That's a long time. You're only 30. And then hired as a perfect recruitment since July 2007. And whereas this dedicated public servant in a third account of the district residence faithfully diligently for 19 years. And whereas this honorable Bureau of Technician is retiring, the district wishes to refer its appreciation to Pam Savage for her years of dedicated service. Now therefore, if we are resolved by the board that Pam Savage is appreciated, we applaud all the great efforts of Pam and the district staff. This says a lot that you've been here for 19 years. I am surprised they're letting you go. Not even, I bet, I'm not going to sit here and keep back on that.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So just a couple of words because unfortunately, my wife and I planned a vacation. One of the forms Pam announced that she was going to retire. So I will miss the party on Thursday, May 30th, excuse me. It'll be here from 3 to 5. You're welcome to come. But I just want to thank you. You came through the transition from under Salt Lake County Foundation Division to a fully independent organization. And you helped to tackle many of the challenges that we faced. And I just want to say thank you. I mean, setting up a whole new payroll system through CXL, a new, controlling the software system. And you and Craig and Stuart, and Lorna and Gaila and me, we're, you know, I just want to thank you for helping found our organization. It's huge. Thank you.
I would love to have an adoption of this resolution.
Some of.
Second.
Thank you. Second, I keep, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that adopt, that resolution happens. Thank you. Good luck to you in that endeavor. We now are moving forward to the annual comprehensive financial report and the independent financial audit by Kyle Green and the Squire and Company. And Paul is going to present that. And Kyle Green, thank you, Kyle.
Good morning. Kyle Green is audit partner from Squire and Company. We've worked with him now for three years. And so this isn't their first time looking at our records and our, you know, financial information. But we appreciate them. I think we work well together. And he has a letter of paper here of information that he wants to share and go over. So I'll turn the time over to him. And then I have a few comments about our annual comprehensive financial report that I'll mention.
Awesome. Thanks for having me. Sorry that didn't get out sooner, but yeah, we do have the summary and it can be shared for those that do want it. And hopefully we can keep the goodbye going at audit. Know that usually brings you down here in a little bit. Good things to report. So as Paul mentioned, this is our third year. We've looked at the financial statements, performed our audit. And this is just a quick little summary of what we kind of were asked to do or what we've been hired to do by the board. So the first bullet point there is to perform an audit of the financial statements and issue an opinion. That's, that's our main goal here. And so we've worked with Pam, Paul and their teams. Did all the testing that we needed to do to be able to issue an unmodified opinion. So in accounting world, that's a clean opinion or the highest opinion we can give. I know the name of it always sounds a little funny, but unmodified opinion is our, is our opinion on the financial statements, which again refers to a clean opinion. So the numbers in here, you can fill good about, I know you, I believe Paul said you already kind of had a sneak peek at what kind of the lending balances were, but no significant changes from those. And what you've seen was good there. Secondarily, we're required to perform an annual state compliance audit. The state auditor produces a audit guide each year. And then we have to audit all the different governments and up to those standards. So for your year, for this 23 year, we're issuing again an unmodified opinion. And the areas that we tested are, are there in the second sentence, in that second bullet point. But budgetary compliance, fund balance, progress assessment, the public treasurer's bond, and the Open and Public Meeting Act. We looked at a variety of things within each of our compliance areas and noted the district was in compliance and you were performing the tasks that you needed to do. So no findings there. And then just a general, as part of the audit, we were taking samples. We were looking at a variety of things. Some of the key things we were looking at was your cash disbursements. So how cash leaves your door, making sure of proper approvals, support, that it's getting reported timely, reconciled, I mean, thing with your cash receipts. So cash going out, cash coming in, payroll, as you know, payroll is a large part of what you are. You're, you're people. And looking at how, how that was handled and again, calculations and approvals. And then some of your capital assets. And that's some of the big changes there, some big additions, some new trucks, deletions going out. Making sure again, properly supported. And no, no recordable measures to communicate here. And then just a couple other highlights. I'll get back to explaining a few more things there. But if you recall, as part of being in the URF, there's this obligation that they have to where you have to kind of pick up your proportionate share, right? It's a little bit sunny thing, but at the end of 2023, we were back in a pension liability. So now you're in a liability of $717,000. If you remember, one year ago, you guys were in an asset. And so it's, as we know, the economy is taking some big swings, right? We're going back and forth. There's some ups and some downs. But at the end of 2023 now, we're back in a liability position of that $717,000. There's some changes. The second one, I have to note, so this year there was a new accounting standard. It's called GASB 96, so subscription based information technology arrangements. Usually short in our world, this is spitter, stupid, but very similar to Leith's, if you remember, Leith's, a couple of years ago, we had it implement. And so they're just trying to get some of these long-term commitments, if you were along to your book. So if there's any subscription, like IT types of agreement that's longer than one year, you bring that on with a, what's called a subscription asset. And then there would be a subscription liability. And so the district implemented that this year. There was one asset, I don't remember the name of the software, but I know it's for your trucking. Samara?
Sam Sarah.
Sam Sarah.
Yeah.
So close. And so it resulted in booking about just under $150,000 asset. There was $100,000 liability. I mean, we had to pay a couple, we had about two more years to pay, which was $100,000. The difference there was, there was a, we, Paul had been correctly showing that as prepaid asset because you had to pay for a year in advance. Accounting, just assets and say, instead of calling that a prepaid asset, show that as a subscription. So anyway, if you have any questions, hopefully I haven't confused, but, but that's the new thing. So as you, as you make more, as you get into these information technology arrangements, just know that that might impact your balance sheet a little bit if the new asset and a liability comes into votes. But not, not a whole lot. Just having to show that as that. Okay. Then just lastly, your unrestricted deposition. Um, then just lastly, your unrestricted net position. Um, you ended the year just about sixteen point seven million there, uh, which is an increase of that four million, four hundred and something thousand figure there. So, so a strong increase for the year, leaving you again with that sixteen point seven million restricted net position. Okay? Awesome. Done. I think most good question.
Any questions for Kyle or?
I can just have those. What's they been to calling a subscription rather than leasing?
So it's separate. So lease is like you're leasing a building, uh, lease is a tangible. Uh, uh, the software is more tangible and it's just an, an agreement you have, cause you have a right to use a software.
Okay. Got it. So software.
Yeah, software, big software versus an actual vehicle or building or something.
I think we had a question that I hear. Anyone here have any questions or comments?
Okay. Paul? Okay, just wanted to review a few things. We have our annual comprehensive financial report. We do have hard copies over here if a few people would like that. And, uh, and then we have the soft copy up on the screen here. Would you come on to review, review a few things in this, uh, report in the self comment? Uh, first off, on page four, there's just a letter or to really to the board and talks about, uh, what's happened past year. Some of our costs, some of our history, those type of things. So that may be something you want to look at. They're eighty-five, oh, eighty-five or eighty-eight pages, something like that. So I don't expect everyone to go through this to memorize the pension disclosures, those type of things. But this may be something that's interesting and beneficial. Also, if we could go to page twenty, please, Renee. I wanted to just talk about, uh, when we went through the financial results in January, we talked about, hey, these are preliminary, they may change. We still had a few accounts to tighten up, recognize and why. And so I wanted to talk about that change and address that. Now, in, in January, the number was presented at the board meeting, a preliminary number for the net income, which is also the change in net position for twenty twenty-three with a hundred and thirty-four thousand. When we look here now at this, uh, page and see what the net income ended up being was eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And so we went from a hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-four thousand preliminary to eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And we knew we had adjustments coming and the two major adjustments were the pension, uh, that, that benefited us four hundred and twenty-three thousand. And then also the O P E V adjustment benefited us two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So out of that seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar change, about seven hundred and eight thousand, I hope, was O P E V and pension. And the reason we, we did not have that in in January, we did not get those numbers until February. U R F did not publish those numbers for us until mid-February. And we knew those were coming. And so what I just wanted to point that out, also on page twenty, you can see this year versus last year. And what happened there, uh, in a lot of the different categories. Action Services are up almost three million dollars and that was really due to direct result of the fee increase we did that was effective in twenty twenty-three. Uh, expenses are up in just about every category, uh, other decreased, but, uh, we talked about a lot of these, uh, in, in previous board meetings and addressed that. But you can see there year over year, most of the expense categories were up. There's the operating expenses. And then our net income or the change in net position was minus one hundred and fifty-seven thousand or negative for twenty twenty-two. And then for twenty twenty-three, like I said, it was eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. And so just wanted to point out the changes from what we talked about earlier, why we had those changes. Uh, if we move on to page twenty-four, it is, this is another, really another primarily, primary statements we have where we talk about net income and change and net assets, but this is a statement of net position. And so this is similar to what a balance sheet is, uh, you know, for those of us, for those that are may not be real familiar with government terminology. But this just shows our assets and then also our liabilities. So you can see there our cash, the investments we have, those investments are what it held as Diane's, um, investment group. And they help us out there. Our accounts conceivable out at the end of twenty twenty-three, that's the amount we had due from our customers, almost seven million dollars. And then prepaid expenses and inventory, our inventory in the cans that we buy. And so we had three hundred and thirty-two thousand in inventory at the end of the year. And then going down, you can see our capital assets and, uh, total asset there. And so that kind of gives you a snapshot or, or picture in time of what our assets were and what their balance were. And then if we just go to the next page, please, Renee. These are liabilities, uh, and we can see here, uh, accounts payable and accrued expenses. That's really what we owed to our vendors after that point in time. Salary and benefits payable and other current liability that was, that relates to workers' comp. And then we have compensated assets, just wanted to mention this. That's what we, we do a projection and look at and see what do we owe employees for vacation time? And then a portion of sick time. And, and the reason we do a portion is because sick time is only paid out if you retire. Uh, and then also it's paid out at twenty-five percent. So we do some projection to look at that and try to get close there on that liability with the understanding that it's going to change very. Then we should see the subscription payable current that Kyle mentioned, and then also the leases payable current. Down in the non-current liability, some of the same categories, it's either current versus non-current. But I just wanted to point one of those out, the O P E V liability or what the actuaries showed is the projection for the amount that, uh, the exposure we have there, the liability, it excludes from last year with nine hundred and fifty-five thousand in twenty twenty-two. And then here you can see it's six hundred and seventy thousand for twenty twenty-three. And that was really primarily due to a, a decrease in the number of participants. And then also the, the discount rate increased. But, uh, you know, you're welcome to look to that. If you have any other questions or comments, that you're welcome to contact us. But, and those were really the main things I wanted to go over. I wanted to talk about why did this change from the preliminary numbers and where we at? So, but overall, I think we had a good year. Still, you know, we have talked about cash, had about ten million at year end. We're buying trucks right now and that amount decreased even, and we expected that actually in a sort of way we hoped for that because it means we're getting new trucks in and we haven't had it for a couple of years. So we are getting new trucks in and they continue to arrive. So, uh, we'll address that and show, you know, what they cost and. Any questions or comments from myself or Kyle?
Any questions? You know, it's a, it's a breath for fair and it's nice to live at night knowing all that you've projected out. And since I've been here for four years, the projection seems pretty consistent and I appreciate that. That makes it really easy as we come in here every month and go over these numbers. Um, anything that you see in headwind?
The thing I think we need to be aware of, Pam's going to talk about a capital expenditure that begins much before that I support. And I feel like we need to, to look at and seriously consider. And then the trucks cost a lot and, and you know, they're going to, you do use our investment in cash balance. So we need to look at, look at the future and see when, what about a fee increase that next year? You know, how close, how much do we want to keep in there and do some projections of that. So, and, and the other side was we talked about all the time, I sound like a broken record, which is increased cost. And I mean, you're all, it's almost across, need maintenance, you know, wages and salaries and benefits. It's, it, you see it, but I don't think I'm telling anyone anything new or surprised. We all live in the world today.
And you think good about saying that for the last four years, that we've thought, seen everything inch up. Any comments? Pam? Do you have a comment?
Oh, no, I just, uh, for me, uh, board member Pinyon was able to attend today, but he, um, spoke with myself and David Icah and Andy King, who's our asset manager last week about the bullet that we received for the concrete that we're going to talk about.
Okay.
So I didn't worry about it.
No, 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 you're good. All right. Uh, we need, let's see, this is just information, no, it's not. This is, we need an acceptance of this report. We'd like one, an acceptance.
Make a motion, we accept the twenty twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you for the second, Mick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That information is accepted. Thank you so much for being here today. Paul, thank you. All right. Pam? Sorry, Pam. Uh, status of our upgrades that we need here.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. All right. So, um, just to provide, make sure that everyone in, on the board and the chance that the district does own property here at the Middel Complex, it's seven point two acres roughly and across the railroad tracks. Um, the, there is a map up here, we call it the south yard. So it's all inclusive of the, um, the fueling island and then the outside parking area. And there is a truck barn out there. There's a building structure that I believe was constructed in like, in the nineteen, um, sixty's, but we don't know for sure to be honest. It is.
It's an old build.
It's an old building. You are correct. And we used to park vehicle trucks in there, um, back when we had thirty-two B, um, side load trucks, they used to be parked in there. Over time, with C and G coming about, um, that truck barn is not compliant for C and G. So we have a fueling island, which is really nice, we can fuel overnight. Um, but the question comes in, there, there's two issues here that I wanted to bring to your attention. One is inside that truck barn and it is a shared space with Salt Lake County Public Works. I hope that you can't park our vehicles in there, Salt Lake County Public Works, park there. Snowplow and it's a covered parking, which helps them to get out, uh, during winter time easily. Uh, the, initially in January, when I brought, uh, this information to you to talk about the fuel island, the asphalt that's out there and then the truck barn itself. Uh, initially we were looking at the asphalt repair. We thought we could do it with, um, crack seal and so forth and just repair the pothole. But I think that board member, uh, Greg Sundberg and if board member Pinyon was here, uh, and then also Matt Holberg or Fulton is online, our board member, uh, toward the ground and saw the big dividends, uh, in the asphalt for themselves. Um, so since, since that report back in January, we obtained just the initial quote to replace that asphalt. Um, and we actually have newer quotes that I wanted to just jump to, but there's no question so far, I'll just keep rolling along. Um, first on that truck barn, we do know that we have an issue with the fire suppression system. We believe that we can take care of the, um, immediate issues through a repair. Uh, there's no guarantee that once they start repairing, there won't be more repairs that's needed. Um, but initially we're looking at about three eight thousand to fifty to bring it within code. And it is our building, even though we're not in there, I think it's our responsibility to make sure it's safe. But it will be a shared call since Public Works operations, this part of the vehicle's in there. I've already spoken, uh, to Crystal Hubbard, who's the director of, of Toywork and then Leon Barrett and Meredith, excuse me, as well. So they understand that this is coming. Um, then comes the replacing the asphalt as a fuel island. So we're looking at twelve feet out from the curb. And, um, we would like to replace that asphalt with concrete that is much more sustainable over time. Um, they, they need the experts in the field, the asphalt really needs to be prepared, replaced within five to 10 years. I think the asphalt that's out there is older than that. Um, but the concrete will live on for quite a lengthy time. You know, they're going at fifteen years. So, um, board member Pinyon is review our quotes. Uh, right now we have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand for twelve feet up in the curb for, um, concrete. He sent me this via text this, this morning that he couldn't come, but he verified the, the quote that we received. So the quote does include the milling it up, basically taking it down to the ground, uh, getting it ready and prepared for concrete and then pulling off that debris. Um, and they will put in a road base underneath the concrete, uh, which kind of helps bring that right down. Uh, and again, it's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand roughly, uh, twelve feet from the curb. Uh, it is, as Paul mentioned, it's cost that we have not budgeted for, but we, they alter, absorb as much as we can in our operation budget. We will probably have under expend personnel, but we'll come back to you in September, October to let you know more of how folks we are, if we can just source that turn on.
Do you want other quotes or are there any of this other vendors that provided this stuff?
Yeah, so this is a contracted vendor since Salt Lake County that I can piggyback on. The initial quote that was on the other page that was quite high was just a rough estimate from a, a different vendor that isn't contracted. So, you know, we, um, Andy King, I want to commend him, uh, for digging in and, and finding the contract through Public Works and, and the company. And once we get this secure, we'll have a contract in place ourselves. Renee Plant also developed that. And then Andy King and David Infield, our spearhead, uh, launch interest because our trucks won't be able to work on that island for quite a while.
Yeah.
And the, the thought is do one side at a time. So it's not all the way around the island, it's on one side, the east side, and then on the west side as well.
When do you anticipate trying to get that done? This year, next year?
We're hoping to do it this year and start in the, in the fall. It depends on the contractor's availability and also depends on how much, how quickly we can make things happen.
Will that price go up? I mean, if we don't get going on it?
It very well could. Materials go up. So, yeah, the, the preference would be that we take care of it this year.
How long would they get started for?
That we're not quite sure because they need to dig in and, and come out and really do a, a good analysis for. And so that we'll know more as we go along and I can let you know. Uh, this morning I mainly need the, the nod to go ahead and start this.
Those of you that were out there.
I think do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it needs to, needs to be done before a truck falls right into one of those holes.
Yeah, and we have had a couple of trips out there from employees tripping and that, you know, and you know, an injury would get that flux right away. If you generally have an asset, we have responsibility to maintain it.
Did a official motion or everybody nod?
I'll take an official motion.
I'll take an official motion if you want her to move ahead on this project.
We'll make a motion, we have not, uh, returned.
Okay. Okay.
And the fire.
Yeah, absolutely, that fire suppression.
Yes.
That would be embarrassing if our, um, barn went on fire. And so the county is helping with that cost. Did I understand that correctly with the fire suppression of that building?
It would be a shared cost and there is a split, um, under the interlocal for, you know, basically who occupies what and what percentage. So Andy King and Renee Plant put something together and will pursue the two, um, scotties, Public Works.
Are these costs, are these our portions of the cost or the, the total cost that we'll then share?
Good question. So for the fire suppression system, that's the full cost that we will share. For the other cost for the concrete, that is solely art because it's twelve feet up from the curb of our property. Uh, once we get beyond the truck lane is where it becomes a shared call. That helps.
And we're just, we have that in the general hunt?
Well, that, that's what we need to look at. See, we, we have it, I mean, we have cash and you have like, it, it, to leave when we start doing these things, especially the asphalt and concrete, we need to get it in the capital project. So we need to get approval for that. If we're going to see our capital budget this year, which I think we made with this. So then we'll shut that. And then the trucks too, because what happened, some of the trucks that we thought were going to get last year, we got this year. And so to move some of that, so that's what we need to look at. And see, we just need to make sure we get, you know, approval from the board.
Okay. All right. Anything? Yeah.
I was just, uh, in our legal counsel, if it, if it has to be like the capital project, like Paul missed, go out of that fund versus the operation. We'll iron that out for third. Yeah, we'll figure that out. Yeah. Pretty sure the fire suppression we can do under the, uh, expenditures, operation expenditures. And then thank you for that approval, um, and the nod. The other thing I just wanted to bring up and have, plant a seed for consideration in what would you as a board want to do with that truck barn? Um, do you want us to, as staff, I mean, the site stream for us as staff would be that we Um, do you want us to, as staff, I mean, the site dream for us as staff would be that we have a whole building. Um, so it'd be basically a tear down and building a building, which we understand that would be a quick dream. Um, but then there's also the thought of could we um. Basically retrofit that for C and G and have some more vehicles parked in. These are questions that we all know. Um, but perhaps you would entertain the idea that we explore. Uh, to have somebody come out and evaluate that and let us know. What possibilities may exist, and it doesn't have to be answered today, obviously, but I wanted to at least plant that seed.
I think it's worth looking into. I would also be interested in looking into how that would play into like a financial plan. We were so, oh, what the different options are and then what how those options will play in. Expenses of each option?
Yeah.
Is there a hybrid option available too, where you can park trucks for that down, if you did a tear down? Trucks down if there's bombs upstairs, kind of the situation. Obviously, it's going to be pricier, but it's the goal is to get your space. That could leave both issues.
And we do own that parking area as well. Yeah, I think you've. So export, and this would be long term. Right, but again, it's going back to that, let's group as a as a four team and figure out how to handle the. Uh, challenges and also opportunities.
Um, so what is our agreement? Do we pay rent on this and then versus what's the agreement? That part of, did I pay rent on that or is it a dollar or, you know, one kind of thing? Not really a rental fee, but it's like a horse transaction.
A good question. So we pay the rent of the building, we also pay for shared maintenance costs. So we pay for life, but obviously heat, air conditioning, and then as far as outside, we pay the shared cost for that as well. Um, I have asked the Eric Sworson, who is the real estate person from Salt Lake County. To set up a meeting with us, Public Works Operations, look at the shared space. So we occupy ten thousand or the what we call the North Forty, where we have our cans and et cetera out there for storage. Um, and it's really the question, if we're being charged for that, we need to charge them for dating space on a truck farm. But that's the big question. We need to dig into that, I know for sure, but we know we pay rent for here and.
And it's not.
And this this year's uh payment for rent was two hundred and seventy.
The office that they're taking from here is obviously a lot more valuable than the North Forty phase where you think for can. So that would be really interesting to have a look at that.
Definitely get back to you on that, like, shut up a little meeting.
Yeah, that definitely becomes a factor too, when you're looking at building your own building, you know, it's like, well, we have those costs, but it's not being invested in our property. Rents versus.
Anything else on that subject or?
There's nothing else for me, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um. Update on a certain operator apprentice program, I'd be eager to hear. If you knew how that's going.
So Renee Plant is is uh put together quite the information for you and the updates, and I think you all are familiar with the. I put an introduction in there, but I think you're all familiar. I'm just going to turn it over to Renee and go for it.
Yeah, so uh, so as you made a call last year, we we started the the new equipment operator kind of program. And our two apprentices are nearing graduation, which is really exciting. We got um Lori Keen into the program with her CBL, which gave her credit for two hundred tours. And then we got Jesus Keen in the house that Misses gotten this. So um, so with that, Lori graduation day is currently uh. Working at sixteen for her, and then maybe this will be the company. And I think I think Paul's recently came here. We we track every single hour that we're out there getting experience, different kind of driving, they're training. Um, everything is down to the half hour. That and um, so it's it's quite a sense of just wherever meeting the guy left, we finish the schedule. And um, so we're worried about that. Um, and then also through the process, uh, we helped it in forty and and David and and Amy there, that all operations, we all came together with that. How do we um create something to help us track? Will not only give premises, but our new powers and eventually roll out to um all of our regular foot operators coming performing. Let's look at uh data and and really pull that in to say, okay, um, what can we measure? And so our our goal is, we're getting there, we're hoping to have a mock uh scorecard ready in July. And uh, we've come up together with the metrics that we're looking at to our own board. And uh, just to know, what will KPIs in here are data driven already or manager driven? Um, but we eventually hope to to get to essentially the scorecard being eighty percent, not basis driven, leaving that twenty percent for more of that. Um, top fields, you know, making sure that we're pulling in leadership and training and. So um, so the new metrics right here that that we are starting, that we track. And um, just to throw in there too, we're looking at fashion baseline, and and we're really close to adding that that down. Where we're looking at um within the last one three years for our regular foot operators, what gives us a good scale? Where we can then give them the ratio, and you know, keep up with this awesome formula to where, you know, we're looking at. Uh, fashion baseline, and um, and then giving that ratio, using theater education and all kinds of other fun formulas. Getting to the magic all of a sudden, and um, making sure it's fair. To where, um, you know, one of the items that that we put a lot of work into was our efficiency. Where we're looking at what we call an adjusted um ton per hour. So essentially, no matter what programs they're working on, if it be recycle or garbage, the the adjusted ton per hour is equal. So it's like a, essentially it's like a five to one ratio. So it takes um five, the an effort of five, we're dividing many tons to equate to like one garbage ton. So then when we're looking at adjusted ton per hour, then again, it matters what programs they're working, uh, based on um our tickets that we get from, you know, the. Landfills and transportation, we're implementing. So um, so that's one of them, route activity, you know, misses, a lot more or drivers have. So we're really in in making sure that they're looking at the map, activity, and keeping, you know, getting every chance that they can. Load management, making sure they're legal. Um, safety and incident rate, making sure that there are accidents and.
I'll pop right there for any questions? Okay.
So, yeah, I just, so when we introduced this program, um, a couple of board members said we want to see, you know, how you're measuring success. So the key performance indicators, um, I'm I'm proud of the team for coming up with those and figuring out, how do we measure this success of our. Equipment operators and apprentices, but also our our equipment operators and chairs. Thank you.
Yeah, very excited about that.
Yeah.
And then we. About the key metrics, both of you could get it, it's really.
In the meantime, um, we wanted to go ahead and do a survey with with our our folks to really see what their comfort level is. Um, to where that we felt like that was a really key performance indicator for this apprentice program. Say, okay, when they're, when they come in with a apprentice program, how comfortable are they for those that has different training um programs before? And so, um, it, we we had a free ballot mix of respondents, probably, you know, different uh experience levels. Um, we had seventeen total, and thirty five percent of the respondents have less than one through the organization. So we looked at the two apprentices, and we looked at all of our new as of last year. Then, so they did that, so come through the success program, but they came in with their CBL, and they were trained by our training department. Which was, thank you all, there's so much for for lying and to put that together because. Because even just this initial um survey, it's just shown how um the other segment of population that we surveyed were lead that have been with us. Anywhere from, you know, two years to to like seventeen years. And just their feedback on how they felt their training was back then, and we we told them rest where it's better. The major seventeen survey happened, and there's higher training. So, um, the executive summary of the survey, um, overall preparedness, eighty eight percent responded felt somewhat prepared or better. With forty seven percent feeling very prepared or extremely prepared, so that I like. Those that have been trained over the past year felt very prepared compared to those others that was somewhat prepared. Um, content relevance, eighty eight percent of participants found the training somewhat relevant or better, while fifty three percent. Found very relevant or extremely relevant. Again, kudos to you how the the training manual has been refined, make sure it's really relevant. And on practice, um, sixty five percent responded felt the train provides sufficient handoff access opportunity. And training gap, you found forty eight percent of respondents felt unprepared for mapping and complicating ground, revealing and treating. So this is feedback, from now to go back and say, okay, how can we more refine that to where they feel more comfortable? And the D and mapping and routing, especially the really difficult route, Walker Lane, no free dead lane. Um, and the more recent uh training department impact, more recent train provided to new hired recruits. Located by a training department, has shown significantly improved results compared to more tender individuals. And um, and I've got that on to details for every question. We just made it a simple five question survey, and so. Uh, most non-apprentice new hires and all practices feel very comparative extremely compared, in case strong align at the job department. Tanner deployed ten plus years of those or ten years of experience underway, led, confident in the training, which led to less able to feedback. And then the training department is establishing a training department has contributed to more positive results for rehired. Emphasizing the program, I think, and need for continued improvement. So that's, um, we're going to partner more with our leads out there that had that more tender to um, any of the. Tell them that to continue to enhance those identified jobs and really engage them a lot more. Like data or any sort of, and then feedback to follow up survey next year, so that's our ongoing.
That's very impressive. Emily, looks like you have a question or comment?
We have a lot of people that would like to come into the program, right? Yeah, but it all depends on how many experienced folks we have coming into the pipeline to you. So um, so our goal is even if if those two spots get filled with other experienced people, you want to move uh scorecard on them.
So let me just, so clarify for me, Renee, if um. If those, if if we receive employees with CDL, they'll still go through some training. But we may not need the offensive program.
They not, because they merely have that period of experience, right? So the the program is is more to give any candidates to come in that that training experience while we can pay the training. I was just gonna say that the only, the minimum qualifications for an apprentice is that they're eighteen or older, and they have a valid driver's license. Many have the Department of Transportation physical, and then same CDL. So we have kind of both that have come true. Jesus had, was basically, he met men. Lori came in, she worked on scrap, she obtained her CDL and hired via that way, but she needed a year of experience to operate the sideload or anything of the sort. Within the district.
Just a quick rundown for those of you that may be new to the uh boards. The apprentice program, one of the reasons why it was started during public, they couldn't get drivers and, correct?
Yeah.
Just finding them was nearly impossible.
Experience.
Was the experience, and so they created an apprentice program, which I absolutely love this apprentice program and um. I'm, this is really effective, even I'm I'm impressed with the takeaway that. Tenured employees can gain from the training that was developed for the apprentice, and it can be applied to them, and perhaps that helps. Lower insurance down the road or retention of employee job satisfaction as a cohesiveness, so I'm really impressed with that. Kudo. That's right.
And uh, Justin Trump is the selection manager, uh, he's over this program and is managing, working with Jason Walker. Who I don't think is in here, but he is the training coordinator, and he works diligently every day, improving, getting feedback from drivers and. Justin, it's the Whitney is the supervisor that works closely with Jason and the drivers as well.
Well, thank you. That says a lot about your training skills, that you get this kind of feedback, so kudos to you. Yeah, not everybody can teach and train, so that's a skill. Okay, anything else on that, Renee? Cam?
First question.
Um, we don't have a closed session either for today. Are there any other board business items or topics? And Nick, um, I'm aware that you want to talk about the scrap program, so down the road.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, maybe we can put that on our. History of this scrap program and where it started and where it's come to.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Cam. Anything else you'd like on the agenda for the next board meeting, which is June twenty fourth? Alrighty, seeing that we are close to the end, I think I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes, we'll adjourn and see you all next month. Thank you for your participation.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.